The proposed charter amendments, including but not limited to town administrator versus town manager, will be public hearing.
This is a continuation of...
Let's go.
Do it again.
Do it.
Discussion by council, vote on other action on proposed charter amendments, including but not limited to town administrator versus town manager. Is this a continuing public hearing from the state government, or was it two weeks ago? Or December 21st?
Steve, thank you.
Paul, thanks, John.
Those who wish to speak now, either for against these charter amendments.
What suggestions?
Suggestions? Mr. Rappaport.
Mr. Rappaport, 2501 Greenwood Road. Can we summarize some of the suggestions that you made at the last meeting? I remember a couple of them, like a super majority vote, or a unanimous, that was one issue. Another issue was, what happens if you don't find the candidate in time? Do you have to extend the administrator's time, or do you have to elect or nominate a temporary official? I think there's some other issues that were brought up, and I think they should be brought up again tonight for discussion, to correct, if you are going to correct what's in the charter change. There might be some other issues that people want to talk about, that either were brought up at that meeting, or should be brought up tonight, and we should document those issues, try to resolve, and take a vote on making those changes into the charter language. So at least we have a current copy of what we're talking about, we don't have to go back a couple months, we can stay current with the issues in the charter. So I don't know if anybody in the audience has any ideas from the last meeting that we should be referring to tonight, but in some of this is on resolving those issues.
I'm Mr. Solicitor Iglesias' advice, everything from the last meeting, well, I guess, starting with this meeting, everything should be in writing. So to your point, it's very valid that we need to start documenting any changes that we consider to the proposed charter change. Like we said, any changes need to start being documented, so we can move forward on those changes, and get an idea of how people feel with the changes or without them.
Mr. Solicitor, again.
I just want to make a suggestion, Mr. President. I think, for the benefit of the public and the council, I just think the council may want to start taking a section by section, paragraph by paragraph, discussing that paragraph, getting input, and then making at least a decision about a working draft. I do know the paragraph that's been circulated hasn't even involving Section 5. But Section 5 has like a numerous paragraphs, so perhaps you should start with Section 5, Article 5, I'm sorry, Article 5 of the charter. Start with that first paragraph, which is qualifications, and see if you are happy with the qualifications, there were comments made about the qualification clarification last time, and kind of take it one issue at a time. That's my suggestion, and then we have some sort of document that you can work with. Because the only concept that's been floating at this point, I think, at these public meetings is, do you want to have a town manager versus a town administrator? Nobody's really dug into what that means, as far as what functions are going to be reformed, if you were to go from an elected town administrator to a town manager, and how those functions would be reformed. I don't think that's really been clarified. It's been talked about, but I think it gets ferreted out, you know, by looking at the sections in the charter. That's just my thoughts.
So we'll take this, take it paragraph for paragraph?
That's what I would recommend.
Okay.
And you talk about that paragraph until you have a little commentary.
Okay, Article 5, for the town manager. We deleted the part dealing with the full-time town administrator, and the language that was suggested was the town council shall by a majority vote of three council members, which is, which people have told us that they would prefer a super majority of four, or a unanimous. Three town council members supported our town manager, who shall have the following minimum qualifications: a bachelor's or master's degree with a concentration in public administration, finance or accounting, or a related field from an accredited college or university; three years' experience as a city or town manager, or an assistant city or town manager, acting town manager, or have at least five years' successful managerial experience which would qualify him or her to perform the duties listed in Article 5; knowledge of principles slash practices of public administration, personnel administration, strategic planning, labor relations slash collective bargaining, financial management and budgeting slash capital improvements, and strong leadership motivational and interpersonal slash communication skills. That's the end of the first paragraph. People have made, again, taking the fact is that, as a baseline, we want to say a minimum, but we don't have to accept the minimum. People can apply having those qualifications. Again, the super majority, I believe, is a good thing, so we have to have a minimum of four to one to vote to hire somebody. Is there any discussion from the audience? Go ahead, Paul.
You want me to get up?
Go ahead. I can speak to the microphone, Paul.
Paul Dantley, 301 Greenwood Street. First off, on your qualifications, at best, for the $34 million business, so to speak, you might want to just have an MBA, not just a bachelor's. You might want to look at that qualification more importantly. But getting Matthew even to the stock, everyone's under the assumption that we should change our form of government to a town manager, or professional manager, with a town council. Maybe the town could run better if we tweaked what we had, by changing the terms and the number of seats that we offer. No one's looking at other options on how to run this town. We could have seven member of town councils, with staggered terms, of four and three, four year terms. We got a four-year town administrator, and change the salary, so that we may encourage better qualified town people to come. But for whatever reason, you've automatically jumped to that point, this town should have a professional manager. And I'm not here to say whether we should or we shouldn't, I have my opinion on it, but we automatically jumped to that position, and I think that you haven't followed the proper processes in doing this. You haven't followed the town charter, and you haven't followed the state constitution, which calls for a charter commission. You had a charter commission in 2010, and you've completely ignored anything even close to that in the last two times that you made charter changes. And it's really comes down to the process. If you did the process properly and had a charter commission, what you're discussing right now would be discussed amongst the board, with the public invited to it. And I understand the public is here, and we're addressing one piece of the charter, one article of the charter. And I want to tell you right now, there's at least a dozen pieces of that charter that you're not even looking at, that are affected by making that one change, if you're looking to change, and you need to address every single one of those changes in a separate charter amendment. It's not one thing, and everything cascades out. You need to follow the process and do it properly. And some of the reasons for you chasing this dream of having a professional manager, that, oh, it's a two-year learning curve, the reality is, you guys are on a two-year learning curve. Everybody that gets elected in this town is on a two-year learning curve. And that, oh, if we gotta hurry up, because we'll have a lame duck administrator? The reality is, every two years, we have lame duck elected officials in this town, because it's a two-year cycle. Maybe that's the biggest issue that we need to address and change, is the term of our elected officials. So that, yeah, we're not putting new people out every two years, or potentially every two years, and that we don't have that learning curve. Because we've had some people here for six, seven, eight years, I surfaced for 15 years, I didn't know it all on the school committee. There's always, there's a huge learning curve, and you're always learning, so no one's going to have all the answers in one shot, but some of the reasons that you stated for going to this professional manager, I don't think you've completely vetted them up. And I don't think that you legally followed the correct process to properly vet up making charter changes. You made a charter change a year ago, that the wording was so messed up, if it passed, nothing changed, and if it failed, nothing changed. Look it up. You know? Follow the right processes. You did a school bar last year, you didn't follow the process, and you're going nowhere in 13 months, because it's right for problems. Follow the due process, follow the right process. We're not doing that, and by not doing that, I think that you're not being transparent, you're trying to push this thing through to get something that you may be in favor of, and the people in town are not in favor of, and they're not coming, because they don't even know there's a public hearing. I want to be honest with you, a lot of people don't even know there's a public hearing. You can put a little thing in the valley breeze, and that covers the spiritual law, it doesn't address that people don't know that this is going on. The valley breeze isn't what everyone reads in town, in fact, people don't read it really, they read the newspaper. That's the sad reality of things, now they go on the internet and look up everything. But I think you're not following the process, and you needed to form a charter commission, just like was done in 2010, if you want to make charter changes, follow the charter, town charter, and follow the state constitution.
Lucian Brannoy, 28 Ridge Hill Road. And I'm here in support of town manager. One of the changes in qualifications I'd like to suggest would be strength in economic development. This town is going to need this in the worst way, very near future. I think one of the reasons we should go to a manager, is the very same reason that we go outside of the realm of North Smithfield for a new police chief. We get someone with 20 years' experience under state police, from out of town. We do not necessarily have the most qualified officers coming up the ranks, so we spread a wider net and search out of our hometown. Do we not do the same for superintendent? Do we not do the same for the fire chief? These are some of the reasons we're going to get more qualified people, who'll be able to run the town in this day and age. So please, move forward with town manager, we've got an excellent solicitor, who can give you the rules and regulations for due process, and follow his advice, and it can be done. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on the issue?
I got a call from the Boston streets. I know the last public hearing was the 21st, right? And that was a big band concert at the high school, so, and I just, I have to agree, I never saw it posted, I didn't find out until I brought up the agenda. And so I'm just wondering, was this actually posted, and was it, has a decision been made about when it would be placed on the ballot? Because I just, I don't have any of that information, so I don't know if you could just update me on that?
As of right now, town was given permission, should we decide to place it on the presidential preference ballot in April, April 26th or 27th of this year?
Okay, is that something that you actually voted on as a town council?
This is something that was, we had to seek permission from the board to do this, from the state board of elections, because it's something that, I think it was once before? Mr. Solicitor, of the state board?
Sorry, you're talking about getting permission for the special election?
Yeah. If we decided to put the question before the state board?
Well, that's, that authority vested with the state board of elections, and they granted you that authority if you so choose.
Right. So it was, if we decided to put it on the ballot for that time, the question, the state board consented to do so.
Okay, so then it's just a matter of, we're listening to public comment, and then the town council voting yea or nay, to put it on the ballot for the primary? Okay, thank you. Then the only other thing I would say is what was brought up at the very first public hearing, was just the timing of it, how few people actually get out, I don't know whether we ever could have gotten the statistics about how many people here actually vote at a presidential primary, but I really hope that, if you do put it, that it's reflective of what the town really feels, because I'm just not sure what that would have turned out. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Bob Erks, 1021. I guess I got up because I agree with you. In general, the thing you need to look for is, do you want an MPA or an MBA? Two different degrees, Master Public Administration focuses on public operation, MBA focuses on private in most cases. And all the other areas that will make a difference in how much this costs, is you're going to pay a premium for an appointed town administrator, simply because of the chaotic background you've had, because it's the first time you've had one, because it's a typical three to two vote in critical issues. So you need to be aware that other things have to go along with this. You need to have ordinances and charter changes that deal with violations of the charter. Look at what Earlville has, look at what Smithfield has. Those are real weaknesses, because if those aren't resolved, you're going to have continuing strife with the government. That's basically it. We'd be glad to make further comments or writing as you move on.
Thank you.
Carol Dranglson, 5511 Greenwood Road. I spoke the last time. My big concern is with the change, if we go to town manager, that the charter changes that were done, especially the last 12, would have to be looked at, and that would affect how I voted for it. I would be very adverse to voting for town manager if we wound up with, especially the situation on the school committee, where there would be a town administrator to appoint, and I'm adverse to that, appoint those appointments anyway. I don't think that it's the correct way to run a democratic government, with appointees who have the same voting privilege as people who have to campaign and pay for their campaigns, and to spend the time doing it, and they have a position on the school committee, and then two people are appointed, given the same rights and privileges, and have the privilege to the voters, and they're totally connected to, and in this case, probably the council. I think that has to be changed, and I think Mr. Dantley had excellent point. Charter changes shouldn't be done on the top of someone's head. There should be, there should be a charter commission, there should be thought, and there wasn't the last time.
The last charter commission was in 2010, or where it came from?
Well, we wound up with charter changes that now, we are to do something now, and we can't do it, because that charter change had application to a certain situation. The charter is supposed to be a basic document that provides for the quality of life of the town that we let people come in. We have basic rules. Now we went to change, and we have a rule in effect that will no longer apply, and again, I have to say, I think it was not written in the best interest of the town to be handled.
Well, you mentioned the, we did have some charter changes. You referenced the fact that the two appointees, one by the town administrator, one by the council, and it was voted on by the public.
That's right.
And they also gave the council the right to ratify teachers' contracts as well.
Right.
And people voted to give the authority to the council, just like the appointees who were dealing with, because...
It is my opinion that the council should not have all that authority, I think we should have to buy the government, a government that has two visions, at least.
Well, we have three actuals.
Well, now we do, but we're trying to have two. And if we continue with the other, with the council appointment to the school committee, then we have just one. That's my opinion.
Do we know what it is?
And we also should have a good recall, which we don't. So those charter changes, I don't think they were written.
I'm Deanna Lee, 1021 Greenwood Road. We had talked at the very first meeting about the manager position, and talked about the cost, the added costs, and when would be the best time for it. Have you given any thought to adding anything else to the ballot at that time? For instance, staggering terms or commissions, so that everyone isn't in a help in a two-year term, to make three-year terms and two-year terms also? So that was... Can that add to the ballot?
I know the school committee has staggered terms.
The school committee does, because they're the only ones in this town that do.
Has staggered terms.
It's two years in, three years out, everybody. And then, it's everybody scrambling, they have that requirement, no one is sitting there that has experience to move on with anybody else. So if that can be put on the ballot, as well as the manager? I agree with having a town manager, I think it's a great idea, if, maybe, now it's time to pull that commission back together again, that, the charter commission, and have them find to comb the rest of the whole thing, and make it right once, so we don't like idiots, and put ourselves up for, you know, more scrutiny and losses than anything else that goes along with that. That's it, thank you.
Mr. President, so far we've heard two residents mention staggering terms, I do believe that's directed mostly at the town council, and I do think that is something that we should absolutely look into. They're right, we do have some on timers, with councillor, Lieutenant Spade, and what else. The three of us are on our first term, twenty came in, sorry, Mr. Sully came in a little less than, a little more than halfway. Staggering terms gives us some stable knowledge, so an entire new council couldn't be elected all at once, or at least it would lessen the chance of that happening. And I think that's a valid argument. Maybe that is something that we should look into. I thought that we had made a motion for you to put together a charter commission, when we started looking at this. You know, I got... No, it was a few months ago that we talked about it.
Last meeting, what I remember was that we had discussed backing up the timeline to see if we would even make the possibility of a primary, as well as including possibly the super majority in a couple of the languages. And that's all I honestly remember talking about last meeting, was, you know, we had a lot of president input, but then, when we stopped, it was basically, are we even going to make that timeline of a presidential primary? There's a lot of questions about the language now, and maybe we should start over. And that's kind of the impression I got at the last meeting. I couldn't, if I misspeak, and please correct me, but that's what I remember.
That's the way I remember it. If I may, Mr. President, I think Mr. Vatney brought up some good points about charter commission being organized. That itself would have to have the rules of the organization of the charter commission, how many, you know, that depends. Not adverse to that whatsoever. I do have somewhat of a reservation at this point about staggered terms for town council. Here's the deal, if you're happy with who's representing you in two-year time, you revote them. If you're happy with the town administrator, you revote that. If you're not happy with them, you have two years to make that decision and vote them up. To go to staggered terms, three, four, five years, you know, you may be stuck with someone who is a lame duck, and has not participated fully 100%. I just like the two-year term. Is there a learning curve? I don't think it's all that lengthy. Quite honestly, we have a lot of people in town that can bring you up on history of things, but I think that the voting residents of North Smithfield should have that option. If they're not happy with somebody in two years, vote the person out, that's just the way I look at it.
Well, that's where the stronger recall provision comes into play. The recall provision that was added in this last election is worthless, absolutely worthless, it was horribly written.
Okay.
Mr. President, it wasn't my intention to sit there and say we should make a charter commission, I was throwing out other options that no one's talked about. We're only looking at one option, a professional manager. There's been no other discussion about other ways that this town may operate. That's my only point, Paul, I'm not saying I want to throw it out there, all I'm saying is, no other options have even been discussed, no other options have even been put on the table. That's the point of the charter commission.
I agree with you, Paul.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Did we have discussion about a workshop to sit down and work through these points? But now, the charter commission to me is making more sense. Does that delay the process?
Yep.
Sure. Are we in such a rush to, you know?
Has anyone worked on the timeline yet?
The timeline is, you'd have to have this in by...
Does this guy go through the general assembly?
Fifty days. You have to, if, you have to have this into the secret service date by March, March 7th. If you wanted to make, if you wanted to make a presidential election.
I feel like we're wasting time here, and I apologize. I'm a big proponent of this, but I'm ready to throw it in the towel, because this is going nowhere fast. You're right, Tony, the last meeting, there was this discussion about the timeline, is it even possible to do it through April? You've got to submit the enabling legislation to the general assembly, they've got to act on it, then you've got to get it into the secret state, and I too thought we were leaving here with somebody in charge of coming up with that timeline to say, yes, it's doable, and no, it's not doable, because you've got a full agenda tonight, and you haven't touched one thing on here. And I didn't even come for this thing, I came for something else on your agenda. But, I mean, it doesn't look like we're going anywhere, because nobody's, you know, grabbing the bull by the horns on this thing, so, I mean, you know, do what you got to do, maybe if you just want to take a vote and kill the thing now, let mercy kill it, and get it over with, instead of, you know, coming to meeting after meeting and wasting time, because I think that's what we're in the phase of doing at this point in time. And just for the record, people who are careful of the language, with regard to the qualifications and stuff, should really take a look at some other charters of other towns, because we did do that in 2010, and they're so vague, and the criteria for qualifications is so loosey-goosey, it's incredible. And when I heard criticisms about this language, I really was taken back, because it's, if you compare it to other language that's out there... you compare it to other language that's out there, it's extremely rigid. And I didn't, I didn't find it confusing as some people did. I mean, you can, you know, the question of a bachelor's or a master's degree, which is it? Well, if you have a master's degree in accounting, or business, you know, an MBA with a major in accounting, that trumps, you know, a business degree as an undergraduate student. But you can also get an undergraduate degree in phys ed, be a phys ed teacher, and get a master's degree in accounting. So that's the question. But, I mean, I'm getting off the pass, and I don't mean to, because really, you guys just have to grab this bull by the horn and decide, is this going anywhere, or do you want to wait? And if you want to wait, then do us all a favor and just vote to wait, and put it on the background, instead of, you know, not attending to a lot of things on this agenda that need to be attended to.
I like to Mr. Clifford's point. If we try to get it in, and we try to do it the right way with a charter commission, we're shoving it in. And I'm a huge proponent of it too, and I hate to say it, but I don't think April's enough time.
No, I think maybe...
I don't think that we should kill it, we should continue to move forward. And that's something I believe councillor Solley had...
I was gonna say, in the last meeting, that's exactly what I agreed with, when Mr. Clifford spoke, to the same point he spoke tonight, and I said, where I disagreed with you, Mike, was he said, just let it go, and I said, well, we can't, because when we let it go, we get stuck in these timelines again, rock and a creek, right? So, I, I agree with you saying, you know, maybe it's time we pull the reins back on this, but, but go through the process, set dates, set timelines, set expectations. That's not, that's something we've never done. We've never set dates, expectations, and timelines. We just kind of done, have done it on a whim, set it to a date certain, and then the same language falls in front of us. But if we set dates, timelines, expectations, come up with language, have public involve it, hopefully it can get on a ballot, and we can vote on it. I personally, as a taxpayer, like the idea of a manager. But with the, with the discussions we're having with the language, and that we've had over the last two meetings, I don't want to rush it. I don't want to ram it down anyone's throat, I want to make sure that it's solid and airtight, and that's what the residents want.
I fully agree.
I agree. I too, I did not want to rush this, the process we were following was not quite the best way. But I did call for a workshop at a minimum to have input, to at least get input from residents and whatnot. So, one of my colleagues want to make a motion here, because I, I'm not in a rush to do this. So, we first, we're almost building a consensus as we discuss this. So, somebody wants to make a motion? I'll second it.
I would like to make a motion to create, but not be the head of, a charter review commission, to start looking at a lot of the ideas that the residents have put before us, going through the charter, and coming up with any changes that we deem better for the town.
Mike, Mr. Clifford, were you on the 2010 charter, charter commission?
Yes.
How long did you work, how long did you work on it?
Six months, and it wasn't enough time.
So, do you think...
Because basically, the only things we focused on were the major things. There was a lot of language that needed to be cleaned up, but we didn't even address that. We only addressed the big issues.
And also, Senator, do you think if the charter commission was, had a sunset provision of maybe, maybe twelve to fif- twelve to fifteen months to go through it?
I don't know.
Can you, can you find the passage?
Yeah.
Is that reasonable, or eighteen months?
Twelve months would be reasonable, I guess.
I wouldn't even put a sunset on it. Why don't we just have one that meets every so often, make sure that our rules still make sense, not just have this one task of going through the charter this time, but something that's more ongoing as well. So make sure that as lives change and the town changes, that our rules and regulations still make sense, they don't have to meet monthly.
And this is Solley, the ad hoc committee.
Well, I agree. And the thing is, we always tap the same residents, it's always the same folks that are willing to give the time. If we're going to do this, let's get to the process of the selection, how are we going to put people on this review? And we should make it a little more stringent, if people fail to show up and participate, they should be asked to step down. And all that, that'd been an issue with some of the other charter review commission people. That's enough for now, I guess. No, we just need to make sure, if they're going to be on this charter review commission, they have to be able to, I'm not talking about sickness or illness or family emergencies, but they have to be involved and participate, because if we select someone, and we have an individual that's not showing up, well, that's not the true representation or review that we're looking for. So, yeah, I'm all for moving this, doing it properly, taking...
I agree.
So, Mr. President, I make a motion to close a public hearing for the proposed charter amendments. I had, I'm gonna withdraw the motion, let me do it in the right order, I'm gonna withdraw the motion to create the charter review commission.
Is there anyone who likes to speak? This is a public hearing, for or against charter, tell me, add your position.
It's one.
What? I'm gonna ask it.
Before you close on it, and when you're finished, I'd like to just put something on the record.
Okay.
Can we do that now?
Yes, please.
So, there's been discussions about a charter commission versus the process. If you're gonna, if the process by which you are doing a charter review...
Complete charter.
A completed charter review, where you appoint a charter commission that goes out and performs a function, and then when they submit that to you, then the council has a responsibility under the state constitution to place that before the voters at the next general election. That's the charter review process, where you elect the charter review. The idea of having this ad hoc charter review, that's not the constitutional process. There is a state constitutional process for adopting a charter review. What the council was doing was making a charter amendment. You were talking about one specific amendment that may have different amendments impacted on the charter, but it was about one functional amendment. That was a different process that you were undergoing. So I just want the council to be clear on what they're doing. You closed the public hearing on this, and just so it's clear, the council, when we left the last meeting, was to find out what the deadline was. We found out the deadline, it's March seventh. We got authorities from the state board of elections to do it on the next presidential election. Those were the two charges that the council asked us to do. It wasn't the idea that it was going to be done, it was whether you could meet those deadlines. The idea was you were considering this charter amendment, not charter review, but this charter amendment, to see whether or not you could make the presidential primary election as a special election. That's what the council's been considering, that's what's been on your docket. I know we've kind of veered away from that, the charter review, and that's fine. If the council are gonna do that, we should schedule that. The next meeting will have a proper form prepared for the establishment of a charter review commission that's still into the Rhode Island constitution, and there's a process for that. It's not an ad hoc committee that you make by, and all due respect, council, just by motion tonight, that wouldn't be the proper, that wouldn't be my recommendation.
No, it would be, my motion would be to start that process, because the ordinance has to be written creating it, just like you did with public improvement commission.
Whatever, I just want to make clear that I wouldn't want you to vote tonight thinking you've established a charter.
No.
Again, I did want to put those comments, because we've kind of got away from what tonight's business put on your jacket. It was focusing on one amendment, not a charter review.
One amendment with many pages.
It would make changes, but it was, I understand it would impact numerous sections of the charter.
The amendment cascaded out to many different areas, so...
That's my so. Mr. Solicitor, so what you're saying is, if we go to charter review commission, it's gonna take, the ballot question can't go on until the general election, so if we miss this year, we're looking at four years down the road?
No, no, no. We, the, you can still establish a special election, you can, you could, you no longer have any deadline, other than you'll have a special...
I just want to clarify that if we miss any election in this year, we're not having way two more years out for...
No, no, I'm sorry, I, I did not mean to create that. What I, I meant that you have an obligation in the Rhode Island constitution, that if you form a charter review commission, and they propose amendments to you, that you put them before the voters. You don't create a charter review commission, make them do work, and not put it, not put it before voters. Did that make some sense?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
As opposed to the amendment that you were considering as your own internal product.
Thank you.
But you can do it as special or general.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on the proposed charter amendments, including, not limited to town administrator versus town manager.
Motion by council, Nato.
Second.
Second by the chair, Councilman Zawinski. Madam Clerk, go for her vote, please. Any further discussion? Hearing that, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Els, yes, Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mr. Solley, Mr. Zawinski?
Yes.
Mr. Boucher?
Yes.
You can ask that.
Yeah, I'll ask that. Mr. President, for our next agenda, which is, is it, it'll be a quick thing, just to create it.
Okay. February first, which, we gotta come back to the other, we gotta come back and review the continuance to March. The sixteenth is gonna be busy, first, I don't know what's on the agenda.
The first, well, we just, do I have a sixteenth, or you want to do March seventh?
I would prefer March seventh, but it'll give us time to, we're gonna be playing catch and...
All right, that's all right. Mr. President, I'd like a motion for a March charter hearing, discussion by council, and a charter review commission. I'm creating a charter review.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Nato, second by Councilman Zawinski, for the charter commission on the March seventh docket. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Els, yes, Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mr. Solley, Mr. Zawinski, Mr. Boucher?
Yes.
Mr. President, if I may, I'd like to bring back the attention to items number six and seven on the agenda, had to do with zoning ordinance amendment section six point thirteen, parking, storage of certain vehicles. That's item number six. Item number seven, zoning ordinance amendment section six point fourteen, parking, storage of use of major recreation equipment. We voted to continue this to February fifteenth, and town clerk Todd informed me that it's a holiday. I would like to make a motion to withdraw that continuance, and then I'll make the motion to continue it just for the property of February sixteenth. So I'd like to make a motion to withdraw the continuance, just for record keeping, to the February fifteenth meeting, for both item number six and number seven on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Zawinski, second by Councilman, Councilman Nato, to have this go to the February sixteenth meeting.
Well, first, just to cancel that.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
To withdraw other, withdraw other motions on the fifteenth. All a favor, Sam?
All right.
Hi, would the ax have it?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to continue item number six and number seven, zoning ordinance amendments, I don't have to read them again, both of them to February sixteenth meeting.
Second. Motion by Councilman Zawinski, second by Councilman Solley. Any further discussion? Hearing that? Madam Clerk, go for her vote, please.
Ms. Els, yes, Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mr. Solley?
Yes.
Mr. Zawinski?
Yes.
Mr. Boucher?
Yes. Doc and Nato, have any discussion by council, vote other action on transportation improvement from the public hearing.
I have copies of the sheet, for anybody who wants to be out here, two shareable with a couple of people, and I also have copies of the, the one that we're starting to do. It's a map of Branch Village, and it looks like, this is the one. Normally, every three years, we do another transportation improvement of four years, in this case, for the next ten years, and the, the, this is part introduced by the state, who feed this stuff that, who feed these items and projects that were in other areas last time, and now have to go, the transportation improvement program, which is managed by Statewide Planning. So what I want to do is take this sheet that has the whole list, and go down, the issues first, that have high priority. You have to have one-third high, one-third medium, and one-third low priority. So the high is intersection safety improvements to Route 146 corridor, North Smithfield, that's principally at the intersection of Sails Hill Road. That's listed as a separate project on the existing state program. Roadway departure mitigation, garden rail and mini improvement to Route 146 in North Smithfield, that's the whole area. Next high is resurfacing Route 146, the down highway from one, two ninety-five to 146A. The next one is resurfacing 146A from Park Avenue to Route 104. Then, next high is statewide resurfacing Greenville Road, Route seven to Route five, which is basically from the intersection where the roundabout would have been, to Route seven, and that was one of the things that we requested tonight, to make it a higher priority. Next high is Branch River Bridge at Route 146A, Great Road, and that is tied in with a new project to do the critical transportation improvements to the entire length of Great Road in Branch Village. It's essentially the 2008 study, so that needs to get traction, and if we can get the state to put this on as a priority program, it's probably the only way the sewer system is economically feasible, because it's on a state road that we have to cross. So between the bridge, and the length of pavement, and the change in the streetscape, that is, that is a high priority project. Continuing down the list, we have, the next high is Townville Road Bridge at Cherry Brook, that's just beyond the Phoenix Rising Horse Farm. The next high is the Great Road Culvert at Cherry Brook, which is, many of you know, is a funnel, it's bigger on the intake than it is on the output, so things can get stuck in there, and that's a real problem. Then the next high is the Branch Village Transportation Improvement for Economic Development, that's what I just talked about. And the last high is Route 146, Sails Hill Road intersection, that's the one where they are going to create the addition of left-hand turn lane to go to take a left down Sails Hill Road. The real problem there is that it backs up and comes out with the IC lane, the queue, and, so you would have an additional lane, so you still have two through lanes, right hand turn lane, going east on Sails Hill Road. So, those are the big ones. I will make one comment, if you look at the top of the page, the reverse side of the page, we have a low that's Spartan Bridge, Route 104 and Route five, Greenville, Crystal Lake Brook, that's wholly deep inside Smithfield, but it came out on the state list as assigned to us, and so I informed Statewide Planning that it was the wrong piece, but we need to keep it in here with a low priority, so we can have a matching high priority. And they wanted to do it that way, because it's gonna take them time to take it off. It's the way you play the game, the process, so that's why we did it that way. Then we have the mediums and the lows, I won't go over those individually, but I will bring your attention to the Branch Village Transportation Improvements for Economic Development. We wrote a whole piece here on why it was necessary. Basically, we have to make the bottom of the sixty acres, the brickel area, developable to handle WB, the biggest trailer trucks, or all of the biggest trailer trucks, coming out and going on to that road, going north or south, and yet have a pedestrian scale streetscape for everybody else on the north side. So any questions? I'd be glad to answer them. streetscape for everybody else on the roadside. So any questions? I'd be glad to answer them.
A statement, Mr. President?
Fair.
Bob, looks pretty comprehensive. Looks like you've got, you've addressed. And I've heard comments from the audience tonight when we discussed the rotary. You kind of already had this in the works. Actually, I have two questions. I want to take the first one. You had this a low priority for the roundabout, safety improvements, 104, Route 5, North Smithfield Roundabout. Because, as you say, how the game's played, do we have to change certain mediums and highs to offset this low going away?
No, this is, well, if you want to take it away, if you put in this low, you're not going to get it.
So we just leave it?
Just, I'd leave it there. And when, I asked Steve tonight, just to make sure, I already knew the answer, but for the Bridgados Plaza intersection, that would come first from the Transportation Safety Committee. And they would do that research on the feasibility of it, and then it would automatically go on to the state list, even though it's not on the tip. It's a strange relationship between the State, the Transportation Safety Committee, and the Transportation Improvement Plan, but it will automatically flow, so we don't have to take out one and put the other in. I just, to leave it there as a low, so we could have the 10 highs.
Okay. The third one down the high, roadway departure mitigation, guardrail leading improvements to I-95 Wall and Route 146, Smithfield. Can you give me a little bit more detail? What that entails?
Well, they would just improve mediums, where they, you know, you have a bit of a crash, and the guardrails, it's pretty easy to get the swamp there.
Okay, so basically, when we say medium, 195 Wall, we're supporting all the...
No, let me explain. That's a little tricky, because they put the two together, and they assign it to both towns, their halves, but it's considered to be a single project for financing purposes? That's the only reason. I mean...
I guess we're a little tied up with 195.
This is a very tricky, it's a very tricky system.
Okay.
Not necessarily straightforward and easy to understand.
Question for you. I mean, it's certainly not a tip, Transportation Improvement Program. But I travel 146, and sometimes I want to go over to 295 South. It is a death ride trying to merge off 146 with the traffic coming down 99 South.
Let's see, yes, people.
Yeah, well, we really...
Let's see, yes, people.
It is a, I, it's suicide. So is there any way the town of North Smithfield could reach out to, I guess about a district, Paul, eh? Can you reach out to our state reps? We need signage on 99 South. Somebody has to have a definitive right of way over there, because if anybody's traveling, you know what I'm talking about. It's crazy over there. Is that right, everybody?
You have about 10 feet to merging with a thousand cars.
It's the merging that's the difficulty there. If you happen to be going onto that road, and then going down the service road to get back on 746, it's no big deal, but the merging is terrible.
Yeah. So if we could have something, I know it's not a tip program.
Yep.
If we could, Madam Administrator, could you give back to us how that's developing? Thank you. Good job, Bob.
So you don't even vote on this. It's just a public hearing that happens to be held before the town council. We could have held it by ourselves, you know, at the table, but we're also going to hold it again before the, before the planning board. So if somebody kicks us something, you can put it out there on Thursday night to the planning board. It'll be there.
I'll just ask you a question.
Yeah, Bob, you mentioned a map earlier. Was it supposed to be in our packet with us? Because we don't have one.
Yeah, I was going to say the same, right?
The map of...
You said there was a map, but we don't have it with our packet. Was it supposed to be...
Oh, I think the map, the map was the, was the...
Yeah, we don't have that.
Did you get it?
No. Do you have copies of the map?
You have mine.
Oh, we have copies.
You want to turn it back in? Do you have a lot of trinkets? Yeah. Residents rather have it, give it to the residents and just get it.
I would like to...
No, I'll do electronic.
Hey, Bob?
Now, Bob's a hard copy. Ken, you want a hard copy, or, I'm sorry, Ms. Ells?
I'll take one electronic, please, if you can.
Yeah, electronic.
Mr. Erickson, can you just have a look, please? Thank you.
Just one quick question on this. The Great Road Bridge, do the trains go in any?
That's different.
But?
That's different from the, isn't it?
Yeah.
From the great classes on Great Road.
Is that, okay, I'm just saying, is that ever going to get fixed?
Yes. One of the tricky parts is that anything that was scheduled on the 2013 to 16 tip and didn't get done, but is scheduled to have been done, does not go on to the new tip. So Slater'sville, the Slater'sville Stone Arch Bridge was slated for 2016. They will probably do an underlining for the arches during 2016, and probably proceed with the construction 2017 to the construction season. But it doesn't have to go on the new tip. Okay?
Mr. Erickson, I just have one question for you, and then I'm going to direct some to Joe, who's not paying attention back there. So I'll catch him off-guard. He still isn't. So he'll just get caught off-guard. These are state roads, therefore state-funded projects? Joe? Come on up.
It's not like a nervous question.
I spend so much time with the guy.
And it is no Joe, so this is no. Ask me a question carefully.
Do any of these, because I'm seeing some of the roads that we have on our load list, are any of these, did we duplicate? Like Pound Hill Road?
Pound Hill Road, I see, Wood Socket Hill Road, Pound Hill. I'm going to have to go back. I need to go back and look at the list, which I actually do have, so do comparison.
But these are state roads that were...
Yeah, so Wood Socket Hill and Pound Hill, we have on our list as a part of a bond.
Right, the bridge.
Building on the bridge, the speed.
Okay, the bridge. No.
Okay, so it's just the bridge repair? It doesn't say anything. It doesn't say resurfacing, it doesn't say bridge repair. It just says, like, Wood Socket Hill Road Bridge at Rhode Island 146.
They look like all state roads. They would be exclusive of ours.
All right, and that would keep an eye on what's going on with these in conjunction with ours.
If, I can tell you, the rumor I've heard right now, Rytot has three projects planned for next year. That's it.
Oh, yeah.
For the state? I mean, there are three now. I don't know what they are. I mean, obviously, Roundabout may have been a fourth. I don't, that's going to go forward, then you go further. But as far as the big projects, I'm not seeing, or I don't know of a lot of work coming out. I know I'm not working on anything.
All right.
Bridges means that whatever that bridge is, they'll do whatever reconstruction, resurfacing, or whatever is necessary. So just as a shorthand, bridge means we're going to work on the bridge according to what we need.
Okay.
Sam, for you, has any question, Mr. Erickson? Because this was a public hearing.
My microphone, 25 over in the room. We just talked about traffic speeds, and when you resurface cars, if you want to resurface Greenville Road, the I-95 to 146, you're just going to double the speed. So, I mean, the state should be aware that, be careful what you ask for, because you're going to have more traffic speed problems, especially in Greenville, because the road is crowned. When you resurface, you don't fix the crown. Normally, I don't think they rip it up and take that crown. That's a big crown in Greenville Road, going from the I-95 to 146.
Actually, that is something that they look at, and I think Joe wants to say something about it.
You can try to fix some of it, but it's pretty severe crowns, the elevations.
Sorry, before that road was redone, there were, I don't know what it's called. I'm going to call them mouties, because that's what I called it when I was, like, 14 going to Apple Valley. And I would fly down there. Yes, I said 14, and I would fly down there.
No, those are dips.
Yeah.
The road is crowned.
But those are gone, so they took those...